I am pleased to call to order the May 19th, 2022 meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners and note the presence of all three commissioners. And I'm going to ask Dulcie Flaherty to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance is to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Well, this morning, I want to start with some very heartwarming news. Every year, many of our county colleagues face challenges in their personal lives that cause them to need to take time away from work. As an employer, the county takes pride in offering generously benefits when our employees need some time off. To show our support of our colleagues and their families during difficult times, we established a way for our employees to make donations through payroll deduction. This donation option was offered for the first time starting last month. The ability for county employees to make donations through their paycheck was organized by the Controller's Office and led by Controller Karen Sanchez in response to two employees who recently faced tragic and life-changing events. I want to thank Controller Sanchez and her team for quickly mobilizing to make this donation option a reality for our employees. And now I'd like to invite her to the podium to say a few words about it. Thank you.
Good morning, commissioners, and thank you, Commissioner Arkush. I just wanted to thank the county employees who rose to the challenge and supported our colleagues in need. We talked about this being a family here in Montgomery County, and this was just a great example of county employees coming together and supporting Amanda Coleman and Deputy Craig Sisko's family, Sisko's family. And I just appreciate every county employee who participated in the program. Thank you.
Do you want to talk about how much was raised?
I didn't know if that was... No, thank you.
Okay. Just wanted to give you the option. All right. Thank you. Thanks to your office. I know they moved very quickly to get this set up.
Yes. Yeah, I'm sorry. I should have said that. Thank you to the Controller's Office. We have a very lean but very great working team, and they really mobilized quickly to get the funds which should be distributed to the two employees in the next day or so. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. As many as you know, we had a primary election on May 17th. So first, I want to thank all the poll workers, ballot counters, and other staff who helped make sure the election ran smoothly. We literally can't do this without the hundreds of people who sign up and are committed to making sure we have free and fair elections each and every time. All the results for the election can be seen on our comprehensive election results dashboard on the Voter Services website at www.montcopa.org/voterservices. And here's a summary of the unofficial election results so far. All in-person ballot counting was completed at 1:00 a.m. on Wednesday, May 18th, and is awaiting certification. There were 135,199 in-person ballots from Election Day voting at our 426 precincts, and 64,217 mail-in ballots were returned. Provisional ballot evaluation and counting will begin on May 20th. Members of the military and American citizens living abroad have until May 24th to return their ballot, after which we will begin processing them on May 25th. And all the results reflect the real-time unofficial results as they are processed, and they are unofficial until the election is certified, which will happen in June. We'll continue to update the site until all eligible ballots have been processed, and thank you for voting.
All right. Good morning, everyone. Last night, I had the opportunity to attend the Fire Academy graduation ceremony at our Public Safety Center, and it was great to see a new class of graduates that are off to protect and serve our community. Volunteerism is often a challenge across our municipalities to recruit volunteers at our fire departments, and it's always uplifting to see the men and women that go through the coursework and the training to dedicate their lives to protecting our communities. So I'm very proud of all of them. I just wanted to give them a shout out, and I wish them well as they enter their new roles.
And I understand there was a father and son.
Yes, there was.
Yeah.
It was really neat to see.
Really great. Yeah, it's wonderful to see that, those family connections. Okay, we will next move on to public comment on matters appearing on the agenda. Mr. Stein, do you want to go ahead and read the rules of public comment, please?
Absolutely. Good morning. All speakers should sign into the meeting sheet available in the back of the room or virtually, as indicated by Ms. Co. Francisco. All speakers should come to the podium if they are physically able. Speakers should identify themselves by name and municipality. All public comments must be relevant or remain to county business. Under the law, this means that the subject matter of all comments must be limited to items or issues which are currently before the commissioners for consideration or which may come before the commissioners for consideration at a future meeting. Whether matters remain to county business is a determination to be made by the county solicitor. Time limit of two minutes will be monitored, and county staff will respectfully request speakers to conclude their comments if the speaker goes beyond the time allotted or is not required to respond to comments, and the public is reminded this is not an opportunity for dialogue and questions and answers. The board chair may direct appropriate county staff to follow up on any questions or additional comments after the meeting. Disruptive behavior, including but not limited to yelling from the seats, arguing whether matters remain to county business once the solicitor has made a determination of such, refusing to yield the floor once time has elapsed and being requested to sit down, shall be grounds for removal from the meeting or muting without further admonishment or warning. As always, commissioners, welcome written correspondence, comments, and feedback at commissioners@montcoopa.org.
Thank you, Mr. Stein. So again, we're going to start with comments on matters on today's agenda, and we will start with folks in the room who are here for that. Ms. Co. Francisco?
Sure. We have David Morgan first.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I'm commenting because there are words of contract in each agenda, and I'm concerned about the spending. We taxpayers have just paid our taxes, our county taxes, an eight percent higher this past year, and then last year's five percent higher. So I think everyone's feeling the pressure of inflation and trying to make ends meet. If you're a renter, then you're still going to be affected by these tax increases from your landlord. So I think we should maybe really look carefully at what we can do to especially clarify the justice center of spending. And I happened to be reading about the approximately seven-story Bucks County Justice Center, which was completed in 2015 at a cost of $86 million total. So I have my little visual aid to show you, like, this is the 86 worth. Last summer, the commissioners spent $232 million for Phase Two of our Justice Center. So seeing the difference in cost, we don't have today, from what I can look at the website, county website, a Phase One total. So I feel it would be good to keep a running tally for our financial concerns of our upcoming expenses as taxpayers. So I don't have a Page One. Here's 2015. Here's last summer, $232 million. We don't know what happened before that. We don't know what's coming up this summer. So I'm asking you to have kindness and consideration for the taxpayers and everybody affected by the spending. There's lots of worthy programs, even mentioned last meeting, which could get funding if we had the money to do it. I know you've been helping with the federal funding for helping with COVID, but still, we need to have this addressed so we can thrive in our county. Thank you.
Next for agenda item is Pauline Braccio.
Good morning. My name is Pauline Braccio. I am from Tomson Township. I noticed on the agenda that Christina Miller will be talking about COVID. And, you know, I don't have enough time to really go over so many of the things, but one of them is, you know, I have this sheet here. This is from, and I regret I don't have the publication anymore on this. It doesn't get any more insane than this. The more you vaccinate, the greater your chance of getting COVID. Vaccinate three times, and your risk of getting COVID is three times worse than an unvaccinated person. And I mentioned this last time, I don't know if you remember, that in Australia, they had a 1,700% increase in deaths from COVID. Eighty percent of those deaths are from fully vaccinated people. So when Christina gets up here and she starts talking about how safe and effective they are, well, that's just not true. And also, I'm sure you've heard about all the athletes that are literally, literally dropping dead on the field of play, and that is due to COVID. And 12-year-olds having heart attacks, that's not normal. Myocarditis is a very serious issue, and we already know it is caused by the vaccine. So you, as you claim being a physician, should not be pushing a vaccination that is so destructive to human beings. Thank you.
Anyone else heard agenda comment?
I'm just asking anyone who's logged in via Zoom if you have agenda item comment, to please raise your hand now. Okay, we'll move to general public comment. Okay, we have David Morgan.
Last, I'm from Amherst, by the way, Amherst, Pennsylvania. Last November, I was very happy that the commissioners had a presentation on Montco Mamas, which is to help black birth outcomes be improved. And I think it's a very worthy project, and I think for everyone to help foster life is a really good thing. I think if we go to the second meeting in November, about minute 40, Mrs. Blaylock talks about it, and it's really good to have support of the Health Commission on that. So I'd like to, though, say that we noticed in the paper this week, a rally which says, "Together, we fight for all." Well, the unborn child develops greatly in the first trimester, fully formed. Go to the Children's Hospital website, you'll find that out, or Cleveland Clinic.
Mr. Morgan, I just want to remind you that you need to, your commenting to be germane to matters that would appear before the commissioners.
I hope that the, thank you, I hope that the Montco Mamas continues to appear before the commissioners. The first time was November, the second meeting. I think it's a very worthy thing to encourage life in our county. So we know that the fully-formed child is destined normally to be loved by his parents, the father and father. So I think that should be mentioned here at the county. Unfortunately, when it says on this statement, "For all," the human with unique DNA being formed in the womb is not included in that "for all," it seems, because discussion is to end that life. And a school bus went by, and a woman told me lately in Amherst that children are a blessing. She said, "Baby is the joy of life." And the school bus with waving hands, and one woman told me how in the womb, the child waves hands. This is the actual hand of a child, copied over. So I think it's just wonderful that we can support life, and many have told me how important it is. Hopefully, we'll remember Montco Mamas in our county.
Next, we have Pauline Braccio.
Good morning, Pauline Braccio, Tomson Township. I worked the election this past Tuesday as judge because the regular judge, she was ill. She called me the night before. And I was really surprised at how little the voter services headed by Ken Lawrence over here supplies the different precincts. We only had three shields for the tables, and we only got like 12 privacy folders. So when there's a flurry of people, we never had a snowstorm, but a flurry of people would come in, we were literally running out of Sharpies and folders. We really do need those things, and for our precinct, we have over 1,600 voters listed in ours, and a lot of them are elderly people, and they need to sit down. They can't stand at the standing privacy booth. So three of those little privacy things don't work because that only allows two people per table. If we had double that, then we could have four people at a table, and the senior citizens would, you know, or anybody else who has an issue standing would be able to be more comfortable when voting. The privacy folders, that was a really big problem. The Sharpies was a really big problem. And I believe that for each inspector, because we have two inspectors, we should have at least 25 folders. That's 50 folders should be sent to our precinct, Tomson 311, and at least five boxes of Sharpies because some of them do end up walking out of the building. So, you know, I just think that we need to be better supplied with things. We had a lot of provisional ballots we didn't need, and, you know, I just, I don't know where your planning is coming from. I know there's a lot of precincts, but at some point, I think somebody from voter services should be contacting every judge of election and asking them, "What do you feel you need to handle when there's a rush?" And we know that in November, it's going to be a huge turnout. So let's be prepared for that better. Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have Toni Patrick.
Toni from Upper Providence. I have a situation in my backyard, and I went to my township, the local township. Now, there's wires down in my backyard. I have grandchildren. I don't know, it's been like four weeks that these have been down. I called the township, they told me it's not the problem, they didn't win the poll. Pico wins the poll. I called Pico. Pico finally sent someone out after two weeks. Last Friday, they sent someone out, said it wasn't their poll. I mean, it wasn't their wires. Well, I'm like, well, whose wires are? No phone call back, so I called on, called them back, they said, "Oh, it's either Verizon or it's Xfinity." Well, I have Xfinity. I called Xfinity, told them that they had the weekend to get it picked up, or I'm calling the township again. I don't know who has to call and contact about this. I come home, you know, this is literally what it looked like, and it's still down. This was me before taking a picture of it on the ground, and now it's, all they did was Xfinity came out and put, picked it up, put it up on like this post there.
I'm gonna, we can pause the time, too. But I think when Wilkinson had somebody assist you, I don't believe this is actually a county issue.
Well, it's not my issue. They told me at the township, you know, Monday.
But we will help you.
We'll get somebody who can try to sort this out.
We're gonna get you.
I need it. I need it out. They told me to call 911. Oh, he said, "After my grandchildren do this?" I'm stressing this to you because this is what I was told, and it's inappropriate.
Absolutely. Yeah, if you can sit tight, we'll get somebody to do it.
Okay.
Make sure Ms. Washington over here has your contact info. We'll have to try to figure out who can help you sort this out on our end.
I don't want to get sorted, me to sort it out. I want you guys to find someone to sort it out and get back to me and tell me it's done. Thanks, Saul. Thank you.
Just make sure Ms. Washington has your contact info.
I will, thank you.
This isn't our issue, but we're happy to try to help you resolve it.
I'm a resident, I'm Montgomery County.
Next.
Sorry to use pictures with you.
Okay. We'll move to online public comment. Next, we have Kim Henderson, if you want to unmute yourself.
Good morning, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes. Good morning.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you so much. Thank you for the opportunity of coming to the meetings during, with Zoom and also in person. I really do appreciate that. And I ask Heavenly Father, we invite you into this public space. We ask that you bless all people, especially the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners and all the citizens they represent, let alone the truth and integrity come forth in the meeting today. Thank you, Father. Amen. In 2020...
Ms. Henderson, could you just state for the record where you're from, please?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Kim Henderson, East Norton Township.
Thank you.
My voice is a little scratchy today. I've been talking quite a bit this week. So I just wanted to kind of give a little background. In 2020, an acquaintance suggested that I volunteer at the polls and see for myself how safe and secure and transparent the polls are, and I did that. And when I called voter services, I actually ultimately became appointed as judge of elections for the 2020 primary and helped to recruit another judge of elections when our polls were redirected to a different location. And so we, I helped recruit two polls for the 2020 primary, and all people there were brand new. There was very little training, there was a lot of chaos that happened, and it was something that I was a little concerned about. So I continue to volunteer to this day, and that's why I've been so active, and I appreciate coming to the meetings. We, now my dog's barking, sorry about that. I just want to say that we're still experiencing issues in, you know, even at the election on May 17th. And at East Norton 24, and I did call Ms. Sawyer about this at the day, we didn't have enough staffing, the machine did not work, we opened 45 minutes late. There's, and some solution I would like to propose is that we, the people, would like to have more conversation and a question-and-answers time with the board so that we can express our concerns and get some solutions. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Okay, that concludes our public comment.
Great, thank you. All right, we will move on to approval of the minutes. I will move to approve the May 5th, 2022 minutes of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. All right, we have several announcements and presentations today, and we will start with Dr. Alvin Wong, who I think is zooming in to join us this morning. It is National EMS Week, and Dr. Wong is our Regional EMS Medical Director and Chief Medical Officer in our Department of Public Safety. Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners, and thank you so much for the kind introduction. So my name is Alvin Wong. I serve as the Chief Medical Officer for the Department of Public Safety, and I'm a board-certified emergency medicine services physician. I'm a resident of Montgomery County as well. So Montgomery County is home to over 35 ground EMS agencies, which are involved in both 911 and non-emergency transport, as well as two air medical services. And on behalf of the over 1,100 EMS workers in Montgomery County who support these agencies, please allow me to express my appreciation to you, the commissioners, for taking the time today to acknowledge the work of these dedicated individuals. May 15th through 21st is the 47th Annual National EMS Week, and in 1974, President Gerald Ford authorized EMS Week to celebrate EMS practitioners and the important work they do in our nation's communities. This week's EMS theme is rising to the challenge, and I cannot think of a better phrase to describe what our county's EMS system has done every single day. I want to emphasize that the EMS agencies in the county are staffed and ready to respond, and if you call 911 in Montgomery County, the public safety telecommunicator who answers the phone will not only provide you with instructions on how to begin lifesaving help, but also work to get you an ambulance as quickly as possible. And once that ambulance arrives, the EMTs and paramedics that will arrive unseen are well-trained and well-equipped. While they're there, they will perform many of the same treatments and interventions that would be performed in the emergency department based on protocols and procedures authorized by the Montgomery County Medical Advisory Committee in coordination with the statewide EMS system. However, there is a lot that happens behind the scenes to make sure this process runs effectively. And over the past four years, EMS call volumes have increased about 5% to 10% each year, but our clinically-active workforce has declined about 15% to 20% in that same period of time. As a result, every EMS worker must work harder to cover the calls that happen to make sure that our county's residents and visitors will receive response in a timely fashion. This decline in the workforce is not isolated to Montgomery County. It is a national problem which is starting to gain attention at every level of government, whether local, state, municipal, or federal. Montgomery County has risen to this challenge by funding our county's EMS Training Institute, which is slated to enroll its new cohort of 26 EMT students on June 6th. But as we work to advocate for EMS system in our EMS workforce in Montgomery County, there are complex and multifaceted issues at the root of the workforce decline, which include poor insurance reimbursement, salary and wages that are not sufficient or sustainable to the lifestyle stress and work of EMS practitioners, and the lack of mental health access and support to healthily-developing grow this vital workforce. To help address this, our Department of Public Safety has convened a first responder wellness committee to help address some of these issues, ensure that all public safety workers are able to communicate their wellness needs as we move forward. Our county's mobile integrated health team supports our EMS system as it operates at the intersection of healthcare, public health, public safety, by serving hundreds of residents who live, visit, and work in Montgomery County each year. We have currently been engaged in the process of homebound vaccinations for those individuals who are unable to leave their house, and we'll be transitioning this team to work with victims of substance use disorder. The service is a necessary lifesaving and vital element of the committee, which we live, work, and go to school. EMS also provides care, education, and health promotion in communities and amongst the first responder peers. So in summary, the EMS community is comprised of talented, educated, and mission-based individuals who are showing up to work in extremely stressful and challenging environments because they feel a calling to help their neighbors. Thank you for your support of our Montgomery County EMS workforce by working to improve the system, support additional training, and help them provide a great service to the residents and visitors of Montgomery County. Thank you again.
Dr. Wong, thank you so much, and I really appreciate the incredible job that folks do across our county through our EMS system to keep our residents safe. And I don't know if people really understand how coordinated and supportive these organizations are with each other. They have mutual aid agreements, so if one unit is tied up, another unit can respond. And they walk into some pretty dire circumstances and some great challenges, particularly during these last couple of years during the pandemic. And so we just appreciate the work they do every single day. And I also want to thank you for highlighting the work of some of our community paramedic efforts that you are leading, and you've done a fantastic job, you and your team, of getting vaccines to folks who want to be vaccinated but really couldn't get to a vaccination site for a variety of reasons. And we also look forward to some very cutting-edge work, helping individuals with substance use disorders and kind of meeting them where they are. So thank you for your leadership. We really appreciate it and look forward to continuing to be very forward-looking in this work to help keep the people in this county safe and secure and healthy.
Dr. Wong, good to see you. Thank you for the report, and thank you for your leadership, and I want to express my gratitude, too, to our EMS workers all across the county.
Dr. Wong, I would also like to express my gratitude. I admire your leadership here in Montgomery County and all the EMS personnel across this county. Once a family has an experience where there's an emergency and they're in need of that, they can clearly see how important that is to have. It's a lifesaving need, and we're fortunate to have so many skilled personnel across Montgomery County that does a terrific job, and I'm glad we have this week to recognize them and show our appreciation. And there's some events taking place across the county this week to show that. And again, I admire what you do. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the support and the time.
Thanks, Dr. Wong. Take care. Bye. Okay, May is Foster Care Month, and with us is Nadine Miller, the interim administrator for our Office of Children and Youth in our Montgomery County Department of Health and Human Services. Good morning.
Thank you. Good morning, commissioners, and thank you for inviting us. I'm only going to take a minute of your time before turning it over to one of the true heroes of what we're here to celebrate today. As you heard, every May marks National Foster Care Month and provides us an intentional time to honor and show appreciation to all the incredible people in our community who step up in a child's time of need. Whether they're a relative, a friend, or simply one of our caring community members, our kinship and resource families are honestly some of the most selfless individuals that I've ever met, and we're grateful every day. Today, I'm fortunate to have one of those incredible people join us. Not only are we lucky to call her our resource parent, but she, along with another resource parent of ours, Alyssa Dorte, created a nonprofit organization where our entire county and beyond are lucky to feel their tireless work of fostering hope to children and families in need. Please allow me to introduce you, virtually, Adrian Kavanaugh, co-founder of Fostering Hope and OCY foster parent.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for having me. I am here today along with my co-founder and fellow foster parent, Alyssa Doherty. We both have been foster parents with Montgomery County OCY since May of 2018. In that time, I've been blessed to be able to help 16 different children who have come through my home, and we adopted our son in October of 2019. Alyssa and I both saw a huge need for support systems in Montgomery County for our foster families, and so we started Fostering Hope, which became an official 501(c)(3) nonprofit in May of 2019. Since then, we have been, had such amazing feedback that we've actually been able to expand, and we're currently operating in five other counties in Pennsylvania, and we're hoping to continue to grow with two more counties opening up in June. At this time, I'm going to hand it over to Alyssa. She's just going to give you a brief overview of some of the things that we do at Fostering Hope.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for having us. As Adrian said, I am also a resource parent, and we have also been blessed to be able to adopt our daughter out of foster care into our home. When Adrian and I first went through training to become resource parents, we saw what a huge undertaking it was to open our home and our hearts to children in need. We were fortunate enough to have such an amazing support system around us that rallied and got us all of the items we needed in a short amount of time, and we realized that we wanted to be that support system for every other potential foster parent in the county so that they also could say yes to being a resource parent and yes to saying, to taking in a child when they needed a home. That is when Fostering Hope came to be, and so we provide meaningful support to resource families in our county and five other counties currently by removing the need for children to place their items in trash bags when they're removed from a home. Many times, that's all that's available, and we've decided we want to provide children with more dignity than that, so we take donations... with more dignity than that, so we take donations of what we call dignity duffel bags, and so we provide those to caseworkers and to the county, and they are able to take those with them to provide children with a brand-new duffel bag when they arrive at their home, and they ask them to place their items in that bag to go to a resource family. We also do something called Bags of Hope, so that when a resource family receives a child, for the first twenty-four to forty-eight hours, they have all of the items they need that are gender-appropriate and age-appropriate for that child in a little drawstring bag that that child can also use to take to school or for athletic events. Those bags include items like nightlights and diapers, or things for older children like toiletries and deodorant and razors, anything that a foster parent might have to run out to the store to get in their first twenty-four to forty-eight hours. We want to provide that to them so that they can spend their time loving the child and making them comfortable. And then our biggest initiative is we have what we call a closet. It's an office space that's four rooms, that basically has every single item that a family might need to care for a child. Everything from cribs and bedding and clothes and shoes and toiletries and every item that a foster family might need, we provide to them, so that when they receive a child, they can contact us, and they can come shop in our closet, or we can deliver items to them, so that their focus can be on taking care of the children in their home.
We've also had several drives through community members in the county. One of the Springfield Teachers Association had a drive and provided over a hundred and eighty brand-new pajamas for all the children in care. We also like to offer training classes to our families. We've had a woman who owns a salon in Phoenixville step up, and she teaches our families how to properly care for textured hair, as well as braiding classes, because that is just a big issue that we need to address in the foster care system. And we also have events for foster families. COVID unfortunately has put a stop to some of them, but we're working on getting them back up this year, and one of those is our big one is Foster Parent Night Out, where we offer an opportunity for foster parents to bring their children to us. We have babysitters, people volunteer in the community to watch them, and then that way foster parents who may not always have a wonderful support system have the opportunity to have a night out to themselves to recharge their batteries and get a chance to come back fresh. And so, we just want to thank you all for having us here. Again, we are spreading into the other communities, and we do especially want to thank Montgomery County OCY. They have been an incredible support to us, and everyone in that office has just been wonderful for us.
Great, well, thank you all so very much, and it is just phenomenal, the work that you're doing through Fostering Hope, and we are so grateful for it. I think that that work is so critical, because many parents are nervous to bring a child into their home, and they're not sure they've got the financial resources to do it, to provide a lot of these items, and a lot of times, lots of times, as I know you all know, the kids don't leave with a whole lot from the home that they're in. So, it's tremendous that you're providing this level of support for families, and I hope that it encourages more and more families to participate, and just really grateful for everything that you do. Yeah. Nadine, how many approximately, how many foster families do we have in the county right now, do you know?
Yes, currently, within our own network, OCY families, we have approximately a hundred and sixty families. About fifty percent of those are kinship families, and that's so for a relative or already an existing relationship with the child. And then beyond that, we do have many provider agencies, that when we look within our own network, and if we do not have a home within our own network, we utilize one of our provider agencies, and that's upwards of about forty provider agencies to support us as well.
And if a family is interested in learning more about this, how should they reach out to you?
Absolutely. Bill Carroll, who is with me today, thank you, our Community Engagement Manager, is available to speak with anybody. We have an inquiry portal or form through the county website.
An inquiry form on our website that they can fill out, it comes right to my email address, and I promise I will get some to them.
You'll answer.
Bill's information is there, and he has been with the county for many, many years, longer than I have been with the county, and is so knowledgeable and such a great way to connect, to learn more about our foster care program.
So if somebody goes to our website and just types "foster care" into the search box, will it get them there?
It should get you right to our main page, and right on our main page, we have a link for Foster Parent Inquire.
Perfect. Good.
Ms. Kavanaugh, Ms. Darty, thanks for being here this morning, thank you for being foster parents, but thanks for stepping up and going above and beyond with Fostering Hope and encouraging other people and providing that support mechanism to other foster parents, because I'm sure it is overwhelming, particularly that first time. And Nadine, it's great to see you, and Bill, and please express our thanks to your team as well.
Of course. Thank you. Thank you for having us.
Thank you for having us today, and over the years, I've had the honor of meeting many foster care families, and they are by far the most loving, generous people you can come across, and they truly do open up not only their homes, but their hearts to children in need. And I personally supported many organizations that help connect those families with children in need, and I'm so happy that Foster Hope, the organization that Adrianne, Alyssa, that you've spearheaded, has grown, and you're doing great things with the dignity bags and supplying these supplies to the children, and really admire your dedication to this effort, and I wish you continued success in the future. So thank you all for important work you do to better our society.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Memorial Day is almost here, it seems impossible to believe, but it is, and we're fortunate this morning to have Dennis Miller, the Director of our Montgomery County Office of Veterans Affairs, to talk about some of the upcoming Memorial Day events and other veteran services. Good morning. It's good to see you.
Good morning, thank you Commissioners. I just noticed there's three Millers on the agenda today, there's Nadine, and there's me, and there's Christina.
It's a hiring requirement.
Yeah, that's the most common name in Pennsylvania, is Miller. I'm Dennis Miller, Office of Veteran Affairs, I have these notes to keep me straight, so first, let the public know, let residents know, and let you know, we're experiencing incredible call volume, which I am very pleased to say. If a resident is trying to contact our office, please remember our outright goal is to answer immediately. That's why we have the Veteran 10-4 Helpline, which is on our website. Between ten and four, we hope that you get a person right away, immediately, to help what you need. I've been in possession of this phone, and sometimes it rings four times when you're on the phone, and we have to get back to you. We will get back to you, but we triage our calls accordingly. We also have TeamVeterans@MontcoPA.org, and I'm looking at other avenues for us to increase our accessibility. If it's an emergency, the Veteran Crisis Line, or the Mobile Crisis Unit, which is very veteran-friendly, Montgomery County Mobile Crisis Unit, I recommend residents call that. And I'm bringing that up, I want to start off with that, because Memorial Day means different things to different people, and there's kind of a hidden etiquette that I just want to share with everybody. It is, well, first off, Armed Forces Day is this Saturday, May twenty-first, and that is to honor everyone that is still serving. Memorial Day is obviously Monday, May thirtieth, to honor those who have served and who have departed, and Veterans Day is Friday, November eleventh, eleventh day of the eleventh month, to honor veterans. And for veterans, Memorial Day, it's a solemn day of remembrance. We see a lot of happy Memorial Day stuff, and we're like, eh, I don't know about happy Memorial Day, maybe if you say "have a good Memorial Day," that's important, because I know for me, and for a lot of veterans, it is the day that my shipmates who have died and crossed the bar are with me all day. So it's kind of a solemn day for us, I just want to put that out there. But on a happier note, we are proud to distribute sixty-two thousand flags, which is the most we've ever distributed, to over sixty organizations, to over two hundred cemeteries. The majority flag placements are going to take place this weekend, with a couple of them happening on Memorial Day, and it's funny, because as I look around the room here, my leadership and other people, in my head, I know what cemetery you're going to. But we encourage residents to take place in these flag plannings, and to make it easier, on our website, we have an ArcGIS map called Cemetery Map. If you click on that cemetery map, it'll be the county, click on a blue dot, it'll tell you the cemetery near you, how many veterans are in there, and who you can contact to get involved. So, because they need your help, and it's a fun day to have as well. Speaking of volunteers, because that's volunteering, I have two quick things to pass. We're working closely with the Office of Senior Services, the American Legion, and the VFW, regarding, among other activities, cemetery censuses. This is where volunteers will go out to a cemetery and take an inventory of all the veteran graves that are within. We encourage people to take advantage of this, follow it on our social media. I know I have one coming up on June eleventh in Ballackinwood, that should be posted on Volunteer Match later today, but it's just a good time. And for some of you, Memorial Day could be every month. Let me explain. The fourth Friday of every month at Washington's Crossing National Cemetery in Newtown, Pennsylvania, over in Bucks County, is when they laid arrest unclaimed remains of veterans. These are veterans that don't have family members, or the family forgets about them, it's kind of sad, but there's no one there to stand for them, for their funeral. So they ask the public to go to the cemetery and do that for them. And if you really want to get involved, the Guardians of Washington Crossing is an organization at the National Cemetery that does the funeral honors. They do, they place the cremated remains in columbariums, they do the rifle shoot, they do a lot of honor guard-type stuff. If you want to join, contact our office, we'll get you in touch. It's the closest thing to be in that guard at the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier. And in order to illustrate the kind of things that we do, because every day is Memorial Day for us, and we work very closely with the coroner and other organizations, and I want to share an issue with you. John was a seventy-six-year-old Army veteran from Willow Grove who died back in December, trying to get his military paperwork. We strongly believe him to be a veteran. He's eligible for burial at that National Cemetery at Washington's Crossing. However, there's more to the story. He had no remaining family members, but he bought a plot to be buried next to his mother before he died. So we're kind of at a crossroads, we could put him in a National Cemetery, but we infer what he wanted, and we're trying to work with the cemetery, because they won't bury his remains without a fee, and we're trying to raise money and find money for that fee. I would do it myself if I could. It's probably not legal, Mr. Stein will agree with that, but we're dedicated to this. But that's it, it's a sad story, and it's, but I just want to highlight that, the unclaimed remains of veterans that are homeless, indigent, they have no family, they still need to be honored when they're placed. More about honoring veterans this week, we're placing seventy-seven flags across the street on the courthouse lawn, like we do every year. Each flag represents one thousand veterans that are in our Veteran Grave Registry, to honor them, because we like to say that every veteran should get a grave, get a grave, yeah, well, they should get a flag on their grave, I'm almost near the end, so I'm getting excited. But they should get a flag on their grave for Memorial Day. But not all of them are interred, some of them, their ashes are spread, or they're on the mantle in someone's house, they need a flag too. That's what those seventy-seven are for, is to just make sure that we have everyone covered. And about flags, because we get calls around this time of year, no one put a flag on my relatives' grave, that kind of thing, these flag holders are available from the county. You can go online to our website and apply for them, or you can call, we just need to know where the veteran's buried and proof of their veteranship. This one is G.A.R., which is a Civil War flag holder, Grand Army of the Republic. There is no Civil War flag holder, it is only Grand Army of the Republic, because Confederates are not veterans, which is interesting. So I'll leave you with that historical fact, and there's a lot of Memorial Day events. I recommend the Department of Military and Veteran Affairs, which is the state agency, our state sponsoring agency, look at their DMVA Digest, or on social media, there are too many to list, if I started listing them, others would get angry and include them. But that's all I have. Thank you.
Oh, Ms. Miller, thank you so much, and thank you for the incredible outreach you've done across our county. I feel like you've really connected with so many groups and made this effort very coordinated and very organized, and I'm grateful for that. And of course, your leadership every day. You've done a fantastic job of connecting veterans to benefits that they qualify for, based on their service, and oftentimes didn't even know that they were eligible for. So, I know that's been so sometimes life-changing for some of our veterans, and I really appreciate that, and a good time of year to acknowledge that.
Thank you, thank you, I have a great staff, and my boss, or one of my bosses here, is outstanding.
All right.
Ms. Miller, good to see you.
Good to see you.
Thank you for what you do every day. What do you attribute the increased call level to? Is it awareness?
I'm not an expert, but I'm going to guess that there is a mental health crisis. People have a feeling of hopelessness, they're down, depression is through the roof, where is Pam Howard from the Office of Mental Health when I need her? To explain this a little bit better, because that's not really my bailiwick, I think it's good news that we're getting all these calls, because there may, because there's a problem out there, and we know about it, and people are contacting us, but the majority of our calls are mental health-related.
You're providing that initial connection for them.
We are, and we refer them to other providers, Mobile Crisis Unit, Veteran Crisis Line, a lot of great agencies that are contracted with the county, but that's my only, that's my guess.
Well, thank you for your service, and thank you for what you do with three hundred and sixty-five days.
Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Miller, I'd like to thank you not only for the Memorial Day ceremonies that are approaching, but what you do throughout the year. I know my office receives many calls from constituents that are veterans that are in the need of assistance when it comes to navigating the benefits that the VA has to offer, and we refer them to your staff there, and they always do a great job, so please pass that along, it's much appreciated. And also, thank you for what you do to honor our fallen heroes. Unfortunately, we see stories come up where cemeteries have vandalism, where brass placards that are stolen, or scrap metal, and that's very tragic and sad to see happen here in Montgomery County. And it's nice that we have events coming up like this, where we honor and provide the proper respect to our fallen heroes, so thank you for your leadership and all of that.
Thank you.
And I'll be out there putting those flags up.
I know you will, thank you.
All right, take care.
Another Miller's coming.
Yep, so next up, we have Christina Miller, Administrator for our Office of Public Health.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for inviting me here today to offer an update on our COVID status. I'm going to share my screen here, I have a little bit of a slide deck to illustrate these things. I'm offering this update this morning, because over the past several weeks, we have seen a consistent increase in COVID cases due to the Omicron subvariance, and last week, we moved from the low community COVID level to the medium community COVID level, and so I'm going to talk a little bit about how we got here, what this means for residents, and how to reduce risk at this point. Let's see, you know what? Bingo. So first, let's look at the recent week's data. We've seen a steady climb in incidents, new admissions due to COVID, and the percent of inpatient bed utilization, and the CDC and Pennsylvania Department of Health update data now on a weekly basis, and you'll see that we've made that same jump to updating weekly on our COVID hub. I want to isolate new cases for just a moment, and you can see here that in the past two weeks, we've seen a climb over, we climbed over a seven-day incidence rate of two hundred cases for a hundred thousand of the population, and based on data released yesterday from the Pennsylvania Department of Health, the numbers continue to climb into this week. This is, again, this is solely based on reported PCR antigen tests and doesn't include at-home tests. Similarly, we've seen a steady climb in new admissions due to COVID and the percent of inpatient bed utilization. And so what do these numbers mean for us? A few months ago, the CDC updated its framework for determining COVID risk in a community. This new framework still relies in part on incidents, but also now factors in the hospital-related data that you saw in those previous slides. These are new admissions due to COVID and inpatient bed utilization. The CDC updates data for these indicators on Thursday evenings, so we're going to look at how to use this framework using data from last week and the week prior. To use this framework, we begin with the incidents, to determine whether you should be looking at the top rows or the bottom two rows, and then we identify where the remaining numbers fall in the categories or levels. The higher of the two is the community level that should guide decision-making. For example, in the week ending May fifth, our incidence rate for Montgomery County was one hundred and sixty-seven, which means that we were looking at the top two rows. Then we look at the hospital data, and at that point, both, data for both indicators fell below ten, meaning that we were in the low community COVID level. By the following week, May twelve, our incidence rate had increased to two hundred and twenty-nine, so we moved down to the lower half of that framework. The rate for new admissions due to COVID and the percentage of inpatient beds utilized by individuals with COVID increased slightly, but both remain under ten. But that means that we are here in medium now, and this might be a little confusing, because hospital data didn't change significantly. This is because once incidence exceeds two hundred, we automatically move into medium. This is because there's a high amount of virus in the community, and it's time to exercise some caution. Please note that we are not far from that threshold for moving into high. Once we are over ten, or a hundred thousand, we move into that high level, which signals a strain on our healthcare system. And it is true that Omicron subvariance generally continue to produce less severe symptoms, resulting in hospitalization. However, if we think back to that first Omicron wave in December and January, the proportion of new cases requiring hospitalizations was lower than what we saw with previous variants, but the total volume of cases was so high that the number of people requiring hospitalization still caused a significant strain on our health system. So what are the recommendations for this medium community COVID? So what are the recommendations for this medium community COVID level? These are the CDC's recommendations for actions at all three levels. And if we look just at specific callouts around the medium level, you'll see that those that are at higher risk for severe illness and those that live with or care for individuals at higher risk have a specific callout to talk with their healthcare provider about masking and other precautions that are right for them. These individuals, oh, sorry about that. There are also recommendations to, that apply to everyone, so let's talk through some of these. For a moment, let's talk about masking. Multiple studies show that masking works to reducing the spread of the virus. So even if you do not fall into this higher-risk category, based on the current level of virus in the community, we would encourage masking for everyone if you're indoors and near others. There are so many milestone events and large gatherings happening now and in the next several weeks, putting on a mask is an easy way to reduce risk and protect yourself and your loved ones. Vaccination. As you can see here, we have seen higher rates of COVID cases among those who have not received at least a primary series throughout much of the pandemic. But this difference has been closing over the past few months. And as you can, and you can see that individuals with a primary series and booster do get COVID. Vaccination is really intended to reduce risk for severe disease, hospitalization, and death, and this is where you can see the difference in risks. As you can see here, rates of death due to COVID continue to be significantly higher among those who do not, those who have not received at least a primary series compared with those who have received at least a primary series and those that received a primary series and a booster. Recently, the United States marked a sobering milestone, 1 million deaths due to COVID. Brown University School of Public Health worked with Brigham and Women's Hospital, the Harvard TH Chan School of Public Health, and Microsoft AI for Health to calculate how many of those deaths could have been prevented. A little more than one-third of the 1 million COVID deaths took place in 2020 before COVID vaccines were available. But of the more than 641,000 people who died due to COVID after vaccines became available, half, or about 319,000 of those could have been averted if every eligible adult had gotten vaccinated. For more detail on the data and methodology associated with this study, you can visit globalpandemics.org/vaccination. So get up to date on your COVID vaccination to lower your risk for severe disease and death. Just this week, the FDA recommended approval for booster, for boosters for 5- to 11-year-olds, and we anticipate that the CDC will follow with authorizing its use in the coming weeks. In addition, the FDA is meeting in mid-June to review clinical trial data for the vaccine for those under five. We expect to make both available at our county clinics shortly after those are authorized for use. Last, if you do get sick or experience even mild symptoms, take a test. PCR testing remains available through the county-administered test sites. We have a few updates to our locations, so visit monco PA dot org backslash COVID-19 for updates on locations. In addition, just this week, the federal government released a third round of free at-home tests for all households. In this third round, households may obtain eight free at-home tests by visiting covid.com backslash tests. If you do test positive, let recent close contacts know. Up until now, you might have received a phone call from a contact tracer if you've tested positive. Going forward, this will no longer be the case. Nationally, contact tracing and case investigation for every case of COVID is ending. We're shifting towards a more focused or targeted outbreak management effort to interrupt the spread of the virus in the most vulnerable populations, especially in higher-risk residential settings. Locally, our community partners, Aklamo Visiting Nurses Association and Family Services will be ending their contact tracing work with us at the end of next month. We cannot thank them enough for their support for our community during the past two years. They and others have been invaluable partners in reducing the spread of the virus and ensuring that our residents have the information and resources that they need. Finally, regardless of whether you test or not, and whether you test positive or not, if you are feeling sick, stay home to avoid passing it on to someone else. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you, Ms. Miller, and I know I've been getting a lot of questions as people have been seeing our numbers rise. So let me just kind of underscore some of the important points that you made. You know, first of all, we're living with this virus now. We will continue to live with this virus for the foreseeable future. And so while we're talking about these increasing numbers today, I just want to remind folks that this is not with any sort of panic or anything like that. It's just to make sure that everybody is aware of what is happening in our community and to remind everyone that we have an excellent set of tools in our toolbox now with which to fight this virus. I also want to note, and Ms. Miller mentioned this, that the numbers that we just, you just saw presented are the tests that people obtained at, here at the county, or in their doctor's office, or at a drugstore, of places that are required to report the results of those tests. These numbers do not include people testing at home unless that individual has voluntarily supplied us with that test result, and we do have a place on our website, and we welcome those reports. But we would assume that there are far, far more positive tests out there than we're actually able to report to you, because we just simply don't have all those home tests being reported. So the numbers are certainly higher than what you're seeing officially reported. So just to underscore what those tools are, wearing a mask is a very effective way of preventing COVID. If you are wearing a high-quality mask, a surgical mask, or KN95, or an N95 mask, particularly if you're in a very crowded public situation, it is something to start to think about again. And remember that we still have testing available. The county is offering it at no cost, and you can check the locations and hours on our website. You can order tests to be delivered to your home. I ordered another eight last night. The federal government is making them available so that you have those rapid tests at home. So if you have any question, or if you're going to visit maybe an older relative or someone who's ill with cancer or another disease that could immunocompromised them, you can take a test before you go, just to make sure that you're keeping people safe. We have vaccines. We continue to offer vaccines at no cost to you at our county sites, and our Montgomery County Immunization Coalition continues to have events almost every single weekend at convenient locations across our community. So if you haven't been vaccinated, please get vaccinated, and if you're due for boosters, please get those boosters. Stay up to date with your vaccines. And I want to remind everybody, and again, just to underscore what Ms. Miller said, the vaccines are not necessarily going to prevent you from getting COVID. We all know people who've been fully vaccinated that have gotten COVID. What the vaccines are doing is preventing hospitalization and death. Your chances of being hospitalized and your chances of dying, while not zero if you're vaccinated, are dramatically reduced if you've been vaccinated. And so it is extremely important that you get vaccinated if you have not been vaccinated. We also have treatments now that did not exist a year ago. There are two different pills that can be taken if you have COVID, if you meet certain criteria and don't have any issues that make those pills what's called contraindicated or not for you. And there's also still monoclonal antibody infusions available, although those are, those medications are pretty scarce right now, but we do have some in the county. So we have options now if you do get COVID. So all of this is to say, we are in a very, very different place than we were a year, year and a half ago, but the threat is not gone, and sadly, we do continue to see people pass away from COVID here in our county every week. And so I would just want to urge people to be aware of what's happening in our community, to please take this seriously, and to look at what you can do to help keep not only you and your family safe, but our whole community safe. And with that, Ms. Miller, I do have one question I've gotten from several parents who have children between five and 11 years old. The FDA approved the booster, but are we waiting for the CDC to also sign off before we offer that booster?
That is correct. So the first step in the process is that FDA recommendation for authorization, and the next step, or the final step actually, is, is CDC authorization.
Great. And we expect that soon?
Probably in the next few weeks.
Yeah. So as soon as the CDC signs off, then we'll be able to boost, offer boosters to children between five and 11, correct? Okay, great. And then obviously, as you mentioned, as soon as, assuming that it is approved for children under five, we'll be offering those as well, correct?
That is correct.
Great. All right.
Thank you for the update, Ms. Miller.
And I thank all of our partners in contact tracing. They have done just an extraordinary job over the last two years and really made a difference, and we, we so appreciate them.
I certainly will. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. All right. Next, we will move on to resolutions. The first is an approval of applications for funding through the Monco 2040 Grant Program. Ms. Levitt Gruberger, good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, I am here to present the Monco 2040 Implementation Grant Recommendations for this year. Next slide. We are awarding 18 new grants this year. I feel like I skipped a slide or two. Sorry. Okay. So we have 2.5 million in funding this year that is being given out in a competitive process. These are projects that implement the goals of Monco 2040, a shared vision, which is our county comprehensive plan. We have three focus categories that are encouraged. These are Walk and Bike Monco, which are our walk and bike plans for the county, Adaptation and Resiliency, and projects that support our downtowns. Only municipalities can apply for this program, but they can partner with a private or nonprofit organization. Grant funds are limited to a maximum of $200,000. Average awards are around $100,000. Up until now, between 2016 and 2021, we've received 151 applications for funds and have awarded 95 grants for a total of $10.3 million. Next slide. Back to that map. So this is a visual representation of the grants that we have given out so far. And you can see they're really spread out across the county. Some municipalities have gotten several grants already, and this year, actually, we are giving grants to five municipalities that have never gotten a grant before. So it's nice to see that we are really supporting a lot of projects in a diverse number of places. Next slide. We evaluate these projects on several different criteria, including the longevity, visibility, and transformative ability of these projects. Next. And new this year, in our project evaluation criteria, I wanted to highlight that we are really trying to take a closer look at the ways that these projects impact diversity, equity, and inclusion. We've asked questions about the projects before to these municipalities on how they are taking diversity, equity, and inclusion into account, but this is the first time we've really used this as a criteria for our own judging. Next slide. So this year in 2022, we received 29 applications for funds for a total of just over $4 million. And we're recommending 18 projects for funding this year. The average award comes out to $138,000 and change. And again, we've got those three focus project types. By far, the Walk and Bike Monco projects get the majority of our requests, but Adaptation and Resiliency came in in a pretty close second. Those are projects that focus more on things like streambank restoration. We've seen a lot of those projects. It's ended this year. Next slide. Okay. So first up in our projects that we are providing funds to is Abington Township with Safe Roots for Youth and Seniors for $110,236. This is a project that looks to construct pedestrian infrastructure along, two different projects really, Edch Hill Road and Susquehanna Road to provide access to educational community, medical, and business services in the township. Next slide. Ambler Theater is getting funds this year, $200,000. Ambler Borough applied on behalf of the theater to provide funds for masonry repair. They have some facade issues that need to be addressed in the very near future. Next slide. Douglas Township is receiving $80,889 for the Douglas Park Tennis Courts renovation and conversion project. This will resurface an existing tennis court, convert another court into four pickleball courts, and also develop an ADA accessible pathway between the existing path that's there at the park and these tennis courts, among some other improvements. Next slide. Jenkentown Borough is receiving $48,000 for its Jenkentown School Zone Extension Project. This will extend the current school zone approximately 450 feet north on Walnut Street to provide a continuous school zone for student walkers. For those of you who are from around Jenkentown, you'll know that it's a small school district and has a lot of walkers. This will be a very beneficial project for them. Next slide. Landscale Borough is receiving $68,000 for the Stony Creek Pedestrian and Bicycle Improvements Project. This will help the borough install a new pedestrian and bicycle crossing on Hancock Street, which will include a flashing warning device and bicycle fix-it station at the Stony Creek Park entrance at the intersection of Hancock Street and Andale Green Drive. Next slide. Lower Gwinnett Township is continuing with its Bethlehem Pike Pedestrian Improvement Project, and they are receiving a grant of $78,667. These are gap funds to help the township complete the pedestrian improvements here on the southbound and west side of Bethlehem Pike. This will include sidewalks, curbing, ramps, and a pedestrian bridge on the, on the west side of the street. Next slide. Perkyum Township is receiving $200,000 toward the Perkyum and Creek Tributary Restoration Project. This will restore a section of an unnamed tributary to the Perkyum Creek and will result in a reduction in sedimentation. It will help the stabilization of the streambank and decrease the stream degradation. That was a mouthful. Next slide. Pottstown Borough is receiving $200,000 toward the Riverfront Park Streambank Stabilization and Bridge Restoration Project. This will repair the streambank, improve the riparian buffer, and make repairs to the pedestrian bridge to avoid this bridge becoming unsafe for users of the Schuylkill River Trail. Next. Springfield Township is receiving $130,000 toward the Cisco Park Improvement Project. This will implement improved erosion controls and earthwork, construct ADA parking and a walkway, as well as add park amenities such as benches, trashcans, and a pavilion. Next slide. Trap Borough is receiving $162,000 toward the Borough Hall Rain Garden and Stormwater Playground. This is a project to install a new rain garden as well as a stormwater playground, which is, is taking advantage of this outdoor environment in the middle of a new ADA ramp that is being constructed to the building, Borough Hall. Next slide. Upper Dublin Township is receiving $200,000 for the Greater Fort Washington District Zip Ramp. This is a project which will ultimately construct a new off-ramp from the Pennsylvania Turnpike Fort Washington interchange with direct access into the Greater Fort Washington District at Commerce Drive. Next slide. Upper Gwinnett Township is receiving $200,000 for the Haynes Run Streambank Restoration, the first phase of this project. This will construct streambank stabilization measures along Haynes Run and will include the construction of one stormwater detention basin and regrading of drainage area. Next slide. Upper Marion Township is continuing with its First Avenue Linear Park. This is the third phase of this project, and the township is receiving $200,000 for this work. This is the final step to complete the trail through Moore Park at King of Prussia, and this third phase involves installing the trail along the remaining gap on the south side of First Avenue from Allendale Road to Gulf Road along the front edges of Six Park. Next slide. Upper Moreland Township is receiving $200,000 for the Warminster Road Sidewalk Installation Project. This will install approximately 500 linear feet of sidewalk along the south side of Warminster Road from Greendale Drive to Mill Road, and will tie into pedestrian improvements completed as part of the Warminster Road Bridge Replacement Project being constructed by PennDOT. Next is Upper Selfer Township's Park to Perkyum and Trail Connector. This is an ongoing project in the township and is actually a gap funding request. This $100,000 grant will help the township complete this trail project, which was awarded funds from the county in 2021. This work includes ADA-compatible trail construction, purchase of construction materials, and the installation of a PennDOT-approved road crossing. Next. West Conshohocken Borough is receiving a $100,000 grant to renovate and upgrade an existing park, that is McKenzie Park. The borough has adopted a master plan consisting of four phases, and this grant will fund the first phase of installation of stormwater management facilities, to upgrade and expand the the existing walking path, and associated ADA improvement. Next. West Potts Grove Township is receiving $38,900 for improvements at Old Timers Field. This will include ADA improvements, a rain garden installation, and other stormwater management improvements at the park. Next. And last project that I'll be talking about today is the grant for $183,308 in Wood Payne Township for pedestrian connections to link the Core Connector Phase 3 Trail to Wentz Run Park. This will help the township install pedestrian connections and associated signage to provide a link between the northern end of the Core Connector Phase 3 Trail and Wentz Run Park. Next, and I think that's it. If you want to say hello and thank you to Dulcey for coming to support this presentation this morning. Dulcey Clarity is the vice chair of our planning commission board. Thank you.
All right. Let me get a motion on the floor here. I will move that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, are hereby authorized to enter into grant agreements with appropriate municipal officials to fund the programs listed on the attached exhibits under the conditions specified for each grant. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Well, thank you so much for this, and thank you Dulcey and the Planning Commission team for all the work. Scott Francis here, our head of our planning commission, reviewing these grants is no small undertaking, and I just really want to appreciate it. And also want people to understand that if a grant is not accepted for funding, that there is work that's done within municipality that submitted it to see if that grant can be improved for a re-submission next year, or perhaps if it's not appropriate for our funding, find a funding partner for them that would be a better fit. So we really do everything we can to help get as many of these funded as possible. And I just want to comment on this program because I think this is exactly the kind of work that we want to lead here in the county. These are projects that the municipalities want to do. They are driven by the municipality. Yes, they are in the broader framework of our 2040 plan for our entire county, but the projects themselves, the specifics, come up from our municipalities. And they're almost always projects that, while they're a priority for the municipality, they don't have enough funding to get them done on their own. And so by adding this additional funding from the county, it's just a win-win for everybody. The municipality gets projects done that are priorities for them, and the county as a whole moves forward with projects that meet the goals of our 2040 plan. So just congratulations to all the award winners, and kudos to you and your team for getting all of this hard work done, and I certainly intend to support this motion.
Dulcey, great to see you. Thank you for your years of service on the planning commission. It's great to see five new applicants, five new townships, and I would just encourage all the townships who are still white on the map there to make sure they get in their applications. The planning commission, Scott Francis here, as well, you didn't recognize your boss and...
He knows, he knows.
So we thank the staff for all the hard work and the volunteers who evaluate this. This is a great program, and I intend to support this one.
Before I turn over to Commissioner Gallo, Ms. Levick, I don't want to put you on the spot, but do you know what the five municipalities are that are the new ones off the top of your head?
Um, pop quiz. Abington Township is getting a grant. Trap is, I think, a first-time recipient. West Potts Grove, Perkyoman, and...
West Conshohocken.
And West Conshohocken. Joe Gale for...
Good geographic diversity. All right.
I'm into maps. I appreciate all you've done. I know the review behind all these applications was extensive and time-consuming, and the whole team did a great job, so I appreciate it.
Great. All right, well, if there's no further comments, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. All right. Next, we have an authorization of a food infrastructure grant to the SHARE Food Program.
Okay, so I'm not even going to sit down because I am going to tell you a little bit about this emergency food infrastructure grant. We announced this grant at the March 3 commissioners meeting and released the guidelines for this one-time grant opportunity shortly thereafter. This was an opportunity to support the large-scale acquisition of warehouse space to support an emergency food distribution hub. Applications were due April 18th with the goal of announcing the results today. We wrote these guidelines with background information that was compiled by Lisa Herbst, so I'm very grateful to her work on this project as well. Of this grant opportunity, applicants could be a single organization or group of organizations with a fiscal sponsor. The applicant had to be a current emergency food network provider here in the county, even if headquartered elsewhere, and grant funds had to be used for a real estate purchase of a warehouse or similar space. All submissions were scored with criteria that included the potential impact to the county's food system, the geographic location of the proposed site, the ability to ensure equity, and increasing equitable access to food, the economic impact this would have on the organization, the feasibility of the organization's action plan, and collaboration with other organizations in the county's emergency food network. We took a team approach to reviewing these applications, so that included myself, Lisa Herbst, Barbara O'Malley, Yvonne Montgomery, and Simon Bernard from the planning commission. We received three responses to this open application. That included the Norberth Community Food Bank, who requested $454,250 for upgrades to their site or one nearby, to SHARE, who requested $3,125,000 for the acquisition of a Landscale warehouse space. And last but not least, Phil Abundance, who requested $1,763,700 for the acquisition and fit out of a space that has not yet been identified. With that, I am very pleased to announce that we have chosen SHARE to receive the $3,125,000 for the acquisition of this warehouse space. George, hi, and congratulations. That is why I am here to present it.
Great. Well, let me put a motion on the floor, and then George will invite you up if you'd like to say a couple words. I will move that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, are hereby authorized to execute the necessary documents to provide a grant in the amount of $3,125,000 to SHARE Food Program for the creation of an emergency food distribution hub in Montgomery County. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. So, George, if you'd like to say a couple quick words, happy to...
Sure, I'm going to bring up Carla Klannigan, who is our Montgomery County Director, and just wanted to thank all of you for this amazing opportunity for us to really address at a very local level an issue that we've had in Montgomery County for a long time, and that's the issue of hunger and food insecurity. And so with this warehouse, 27,000-square-foot warehouse, we're going to be able to really be able to react to the growing need that we've seen in Montgomery County in recent years, especially during this pandemic, where we have seen a need to have local responses that are ready whenever there is an emergency, whether that is a long-term emergency or a short-term emergency like we've seen over the last couple of years. And so with that, I'll let Carla say a few words as well.
Thank you. Thank you for having us, and thank you for the award. We're really excited to acquire this acquisition of this warehouse. I think it's going to make a huge difference in the way we feed our community residents, and we're really looking forward to partnering with the other organizations in the county to make sure that all residents have access to the food that is definitely necessary and needed for survival. Thank you.
Great. Well, thank you for coming today. And, you know, just, I will say, so simply, as a physician, we all know it's really hard to be healthy if you don't have access to healthy food.
Yes.
And I think we've had a challenge for many, many years in this county of not having a warehouse that could have the capacity to accept large donations of food. And so at every juncture, you know, food has to be distributed right out to much smaller, much more local pantries. So this is really game-changing, I think, for our county, and while the award is being awarded to SHARE, I know you know this, and we know this, that we intend for this to benefit our entire food network.
Yes, absolutely.
Making sure that people are working collaboratively together to the benefit of all of the folks in our community. It's just such a critical time for that. You mentioned the need that has come up in these last couple of years. You know, I think one of the things that was so, you know, just hit home for so many people early in the pandemic was individuals who never in their wildest dreams did they think that they were going to be a family that was food insecure, through no fault of their own, found themselves looking for food resources. And our pantries just rose to the occasion and were able to get food out there in our community with astounding speed and really not missing a beat. The county was very happy to be able to support those efforts. We used some of our CARES funding allocation to provide $1 million to increase capacity and infrastructure, including shelving in refrigerators and freezers, even helped to build larger storage spaces in many of our local food pantries. And then we also provided $2 million in direct food purchases to be distributed across our counties. So, yeah, fortunately, we had that CARES money at our disposal that we could quickly put to use, that $3 million, to help get food resources into our communities. But we all know that that need is still there, and while it's dropped down a little bit from the peak of the pandemic, certainly with some of the challenges that we're seeing today with increasing prices due to global supplies and still supply chain challenges, a lot of families still needing help accessing food. So we're really grateful to be able to make this award today. One of the priorities, of course, is the fact that we know that food insecurity disproportionately impacts both children and communities of color, and how critical it is that we prioritize making sure that food gets to the communities where it's needed most. And I think having this warehouse asset, really being able to deploy food more nimbly will go a long way to meeting that goal.
Absolutely.
So, again, this is something I intend to support, and I think since I first became a commissioner in 2015, a very early meeting I had was with folks from the MOCO Anti-Hunger Network, saying, "We need a warehouse." I'm sorry it's taken this long to get it done, but I'm really pleased that we're finally able to do this, so thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Clannigan, thank you for being here. I know this has been a need in the county for a long time. Can you talk a little bit about how MOCO will be involved with this warehouse as well, your anti-hunger network?
MOCO is actually going to be a warehouse made of ours, so they're going to share the space inside of the warehouse, so it'll give us an opportunity to work collaboratively together to make sure that we're able to reach those parts of the county that are hard to get to for the residents to reach food.
Is Catholic Social Services also involved with this effort?
At this time, they are not, but they are a partner of ours. They are a pantry partner, and so we have yet, and just so you know, I'm five weeks on the job, but we have yet to sit down to talk about the warehouse spacing with them. But that is on the agenda.
Yeah, they're members of the MOCO as well, and so we'll all be working on this to share this space together.
Great. All right. Any additional comments? All right. Here now, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate it.
Before I move to the next item, I just want to acknowledge our county treasurer, Jason Salas, has joined us here this morning. And next, we have Mr. Stein with an authorization to enter into an amended Southeastern Pennsylvania Regional Task Force Mutual Aid and Cooperation Agreement.
Yes, thank you. The Southeastern Pennsylvania Regional Task Force is currently composed of Montgomery County and its four neighboring counties, Bucks, Chester, Delaware, and Philadelphia. The task force facilitates coordinated planning, training, and equipment acquisition among the five counties. The task force is overseen by an executive board comprised of the five county emergency management coordinators, with Montgomery County acting as the administrator. Thus why we have the task force information on our agendas, where we facilitate the decisions made by that group. Due to the growth of the Berks County region, it is the recommendation of FEMA, PIMA, and the five emergency management coordinators that Berks County be added to the task force. And this resolution would allow us to amend the MOU under which the task force operates to continue as administrator.
Great. Thank you. I will move that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, are hereby authorized to enter into an amended mutual aid and cooperation agreement to add Berks County as the sixth member county to the Southeastern Regional Task Force. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. I'll just comment that it's great to have Berks as part of this. They've always sort of been clearly missing from this very regional and very important effort, so we welcome them to the team and look forward to broadening the regional efforts to help keep everyone here in our region safe and secure. Any other more comments?
I just have a question. So Mr. Stein, you know, Berks County in the past was its own region, rooted in another region, or...
No, it was not part of any region.
Okay. So they would have to go through these processes as...
Yes, this will allow them, this will make additional grant funding available to the entire region, including Berks, based off the population and the risks assessed by FEMA. But previously, they were not included in any, and they had to apply for their own grants as they became available.
And the other counties surrounding us have to approve as well, or...
No, well, so the other members have already approved, where the last ones, Bucks, just approved.
Oh, they already have? Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
Right. If there's no other comments, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Stein. All right, Ms. Brown, from Snell.
Report. Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. You should have in front of you the final copy of the Commissioner Department's personnel list. It's a three-page document dated Wednesday, May 18th, 2022, with a timestamp of 9:30 a.m. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for and are presented for consideration.
Thank you. I will move to approve the May 19th, 2022 personnel presentation as given by Human Resources Manager, Ms. Megan Brown, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Ms. O'Malley. Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Yes. Good morning. We have some advertisements for bids and RFPs. One is a bid on behalf of assets and infrastructure for HVAC mechanical system upgrades. Contract provides the general contracting and plumbing services portion for the reconstruction of the heating, ventilation, and air conditioning systems in One Montgomery Plaza. Contract be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. Two is an RFP on behalf of Recorder of Deeds for a cashiering and imaging system. The successful responder will provide electronic images on one system for recording, cashiering, researching, retrieving, and printing documents. Contract will be awarded to the highest-rated responder. All RFPs and bids are available on the county's purchasing website at www.mocop.org/purchasing.
Thank you. I will move to approve the preceding request for the advertisement of a bid and RFP as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. All right, awards of contract for the county.
One contract award, Health and Human Services Consultant Capacity for Change LLC of West Chester, PA, $126,720. Contract provides continuum of care, emergency shelter consulting for the Office of Housing and Community Development. RFP 2227 was viewed by 18 providers with one response received. Contract is awarded to the only responding provider who has met all qualifications of the RFP. Contract is for a period of two years with one optional annual renewal term. Two, contract award, Health and Human Services Legal Services, Legal Aid of Southeastern Pennsylvania of Norristown, PA, $400,000. Contract provides housing and homeless legal services for the Office of Housing and Community Development. RFP 2228 was viewed by six providers with two responses received. Contract is awarded to the highest-rated responder. Contract is for a period of two years with two optional annual renewal terms. Three, contract award, Juvenile Probation, Pennsylvania Chiefs of Police Association of Harrisburg, PA, $33,000. Contract provides installation and training services for an all-in-one booking station to facilitate the fingerprinting and photographing process of juvenile detainees. System and services are proprietary. Four, contract award, Planning Commission Consultants, Alton Research Laboratory LLC of Holden, Massachusetts, $139,300. Contract provides a hydroelectric generation consultants to guide the county through the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission permitting process and the development of a hydroelectric generation facility on the Norristown Dam. RFP 2164 was viewed by 20 firms with two responses received. Contract is awarded to the highest-rated responder. Five, contract award, Planning Commission Consultants, NV5 Incorporated of Parsippany, New Jersey, $119,992.89. Contract provides cross-county trail west advanced feasibility study for two segments of the trail in Plymouth and White Marsh Townships. RFP 2221 was viewed by 43 firms with five responses received. Contract is awarded to the highest-rated responder. Six, contract award, Public Safety Equipment, Eastern Lift Truck Company Incorporated of Maple Shade, New Jersey, $75,300. Contract provides one new 5,000-pound capacity forklift and one reconditioned 3,000-pound capacity double-reach forklift for use at the EOC campus. Equipment is available through a PA state contract. Seven, contract award, Public Safety Services, Entrada Life and Safety Solutions Corporation of Omaha, Nebraska, $46,845.80. Contract provides a continuation of the TECs 2-911 primary and backup services. Services proprietary. Services proprietary to the Entrado system. Contract is for a three-year term. Eight, contract renewal adult probation monitoring services, American Monitoring Services Corporation of Edgertown, Massachusetts, $129,200. Contract provides continuous signal electronic offender monitoring services as per RFP 1838. This is the second of two optional annual renewals. Nine, contract amendment Planning Commission, supplemental reimbursement agreement, $1,321,000. Contract between PENDOT and Montgomery County provides a funding agreement reimbursing the county for the Lafayette Street Extension Project Section I. Reimbursement agreement raises the cap on anticipated reimbursable costs for two outstanding right-of-way claims recently ruled upon by the Court of Common Pleas. Ten, there are two contracts, five contract renewals, and six amendments for Health and Human Services. Providers and services are listed at the back of the agenda and in the back of the room.
Thank you. I will move to approve the preceding awards of contract as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Awards of contract for assets and infrastructure.
Yes. One, contract award Coroner's Building Furniture, Kirchner Office Furniture of King of Prussia, PA, $347,668.90. Contract provides furniture and installation services at the new Coroner's Building on the EOC campus. Furniture and installation services are available through a PA state contract. Two, contract award Assets and Infrastructure Construction Multiple Contractors. Contract provides for mechanical upgrades to the One Montgomery Plaza Building. Specification 6474 was viewed by 34 providers with six responses received. Contracts are awarded to the lowest responsible bidders as follows. HVAC Solen Mechanical Incorporated of Siklerville, New Jersey, $6,871,000. Electrical Hops and Company Incorporated of Boothland, PA, $475,000. Three, contract amendment Assets and Infrastructure, Skanska USA Building Incorporated of Parsippany, New Jersey. Original contract provided construction management services for buildings at the Equville Campus. Amendment provides a correction to the revised total contract value to include the originally requested provision of central trailer in the amount of $143,300. Four, contract amendment Assets and Infrastructure, Civil Engineering Services, Versage Associates Incorporated of Pottstown, PA, $54,865. Original contract provided engineering services for land development plan for the placement of a vehicle storage and forensic facility at our emergency operations campus located in the lower Providence Township. Amendment provides construction support for garage, warehouse, coroner, and archives buildings, including construction consultation, meetings, site visits, and services rendered in conjunction with the redesign of a smaller archives building, revisions to the stormwater management design and township trail planning.
Thank you. You all right there, Mr. Stein?
Yeah, I'll do, sorry.
Okay, I'm going to make you put a math back on here in a minute. I will move to approve the preceding awards of contract as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comments? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. And then we have awards of contract for the Southeast PA Regional Task Force.
One, contract award Software Licenses, Palmer Technologies LLC of Hebron, Kentucky, $30,065. Contract provides 500 data encryption licenses for mobile data devices in use by Delaware County. Licenses and support services are available through a PA COSSRAS contract for a one-year term. Two, contract award Equipment, American Fire Training Systems of Lockport, Illinois, $167,725. Contract provides a live rescue scenario training prop for the Bucks County Special Operations Team. Training prop is proprietary.
Right, I will move to approve the preceding awards of contract on behalf of the Southeast PA Regional Task Force as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comments? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. O'Malley. Any closing commissioner comments? No, okay. Then I will announce that the next meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners will be on June 2nd, 2002, and I will move to adjourn the May 19th, 2022 meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Any negative votes? Meeting is adjourned. And we will move to salary board by Controller Sanchez.
Seriously doing that each time.
All right. Ms. Francisco, do we have any public comment on salary board? Okay, then Ms. Brown? All yours.
Good morning. You should have in front of you the final copy of the salary board list. It's a three-page document dated Wednesday, May 18th, 2022, with a timestamp of 9:30 a.m. Of note, we have four retirees. Michael C. Schwartz, I'm sorry, C. Holtz,